Okay, let's go. Let's rock and roll. I'd like to call to order the school committee meeting for the evening of November 6th. You have before you an agenda. Can I have a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Hold on, favor.
Hi.
Comments from the public. Saying none. Presentations, discussions of interest, of issues of interest to the committee. The preschool presentation. Can we go down?
Yeah. Steve and I probably are fine.
We don't, do we not have this?
And actually, you have your paper copy, so...
I was gonna say.
That's as much for the public.
And I've broken my reading glasses, so maybe better off.
Are we gonna be blocking the slide now, perfectly?
My head will be.
I didn't say that.
You meant it.
Reflection.
I heard that. I don't think he did. Or he chose to ignore it.
Hi, I'm Michelle Gray, Director of Special Services, overseeing special education for the district, which also includes the preschool.
Kim Albertson, Team Chair. And the rest of our preschool team is sitting in the audience with us.
I'm Kim Kubisch, Principal of Nantucket Elementary School.
So we're just doing an overview of the special needs component of preschool. So...
Backspace. Backspace. Yeah. Use the backspace.
Okay. So enrollment trends. You can see, starting in 2010, the number of students in preschool on IEPs receiving special education, back in 2010, 2011 was 15. There's been a little bit of variation with some dips in 2015, 2016, down to 11. Was a huge spike in 2017, and then continuing for this year. So even the difference from last year to this year is pretty substantial. So I'm gonna also give an overview of the legal requirements. We are required to provide reach out and assess students for whom there is concern. So this is under the child find regulations. Child find was started when special education first became a law because children were kept at home or in institutions. So they said, "Go out and find those children that have disabilities." So this extends to ages three and up. For children that are receiving early intervention services, we are mandated to make sure that we are assessing them, conducting an IEP meeting, and having services eligible for them, if they're eligible by the time they are three years old. So we are really starting our work when they're like two and a half. We're starting that whole process. The exact number of preschool students therefore is difficult to predict because we don't know, you know, this year I don't know who we're gonna get for next year. So we get these numbers from early intervention. Sometimes we get some data, like the type of disability. Sometimes we get, we just get dates of birth. We don't know if they're gonna be eligible or not. And then we're always getting new kids that are either moving in, or kids being referred from preschools, or doctors. So that's kind of a challenge for us to determine exactly how many. Last year at this time, I wouldn't have thought we would have had 31 at the beginning of school. Another challenge in doing special at preschool is the ratio and the class sizes. So we have two kinds of programs typically. We have a substantially separate preschool classroom that is run by Jamie Collum. Those are only for students with IEPs. We also have integrated preschool, which in Nantucket is called Pathways. And the requirements for those kind of integrated preschool classrooms are, you can have up to seven students with disabilities and eight students without. Or you could also have a 15, 15, a 15, five model. Five students with disabilities, 15 without disabilities. And you must have one teacher and one assistant. A lot of districts will have two assistants in the classroom. So the philosophy and the program models may vary among districts. There is no one real standard. Everybody does preschool this way. Some districts will do a four-day program, two and a half hours, up to 10 hours a week. Right now, we're running a longer program that starts at quarter of eight, goes to 12:30. Some districts have full-day preschool, some districts have, you know, universal preschool. But it does vary according to the needs and the resources available. Another philosophical difference that you might see are how we get our typical peers. So some districts will screen other peers that are joining these with students without disabilities to make sure that they are true role models for students. Other districts will consider, I'm sorry, it's good to have any student there, including the kids at risk. It just kinda keeps going out.
Yeah, the floor.
Hi, Laura.
Is it me?
No.
That didn't work. All right. Well, I can keep talking. I just, I thought it was me. I'm just glad it's not me. So, so some districts will not take students at rest. They'll only take students with exceptional language skills, exceptional social, emotional skills, behavior skills. So one of the issues that we had was getting enough peers. So when we have six or seven kids on IEPs, we're supposed to have at least one more not on an IEP. We're having challenges with that. So we kinda opened and expanded that. But as a result, some of the kids, you know, might have had some behavior issues, or some kids might have had some language issues. And then the other challenge is, of course, balancing the needs of all young students, including those that are transitioning to kindergarten. So last year, this year, we had one TA, that was a preschool TA, that went up into kindergarten. And that kinda left us a little bit of a void in preschool. So those are the basic legal requirements and some challenges that we have. Oh, sure.
So I'm just gonna give a little bit of the current and what's going on now that we know the legal parts about Pathways. So really, in your slides, you'll see that there's a philosophy on what the past practice has been. And we've really prided ourselves on the one to four, one to five students so that we can really provide that intervention that makes the most sense in small groups, especially since the needs are, as you saw the trend, really growing. We really prefer to have the therapies in the classrooms because that way, we as teachers and the TAs and anyone else working in the classroom can see how the therapists are implementing their services, and then we can learn from them and also repeat practice it throughout the rest of the week when they're not with us. So it's nice to have that ratio of three of us in the room with the therapist there. We definitely have seen a lot of improvement for students because it feels like you get to get therapy every day because we're doing it. I just put in some of our noted recognition because we have an exemplar program. We've been so fortunate to have the support of you as the school committee, superintendent and administrators. Currently, they have just posted and hired two additional assistants for us. But some of the things that really help us or give us that boost up is that our staff is fabulous. We've hired some really great young teachers who are super motivated, but we're really challenged. And so now we're feeling like it's, we're finally getting into a groove where we can get back to that small group mentality and really improve in our intervention and hammer it into the days. Because, of course, we all wanna have exemplar programs over time. And the history of Pathways has been very exemplar. For best practice, we just put in some research for you so that you could see what's going on out there. I would really point to the last bullet that researchers found that five preschoolers, typical preschoolers, to one adult results in better social and cognitive outcomes. So remember, our classrooms are 13 right now, and six, seven, eight of them are identified with a disability or some sort of need for intervention. So it's critical to really provide them that intervention so that we can see decline in services later in their life in our district. As far as that goes, I know this looks a little complicated, but if you just follow the colors. So if you'll see right here, number eight in blue is your 2013. That's the total number of kids that we exited Pathways. They could have been with us for one, two, or three years. And then if you look to the next group of graphs, the number three is the number of students who actually had reduced services in kindergarten because that intervention was so critical here. So we went from eight to three, and then within either that year or their first grade or second year, grade year, they went off of a plan. So the district wins in that point of doing that early intervention. In 1415, we had 14 that were on IEPs. Reduction in services where nine kids were reduced in services to then go to five children off of plans. So if you just look at the years, we've definitely had a trend of being able to reduce services or even have kids come off IEPs. And in the long run, that's helping us as a district in our third, fourth, fifth grade for having to do that intervention. Doing that early intervention is so important. Sorry, it seems complicated. I thought it was kinda easy, but I hope that helped with the description. Currently, like I said, we're really grateful that two new TAs have been hired and they're great. They've really kinda jumped right into our program and they're helping us tremendously because, as Michelle said, 31 IEPs, 54 students total currently in preschool. Thirty of those 54 students are Ls. L services start in kindergarten, so we're challenged with that quite a bit as well. We are ever-changing, constantly. Kids are coming in from early intervention or out of the woods. They just kinda show up like, "Hey, we heard you guys provide great services." And then we meet them and we're like, "Whoa, we're so glad you came. Thank you for coming because we probably can help you a little bit." Part of the information here, I don't really wanna read it, but it is critical to have tiered intervention, as we know, throughout school. And that happens in preschool as well. There are some kids that need that really strong, repeat practice, ABA-style intervention. We're often receiving reports from the medical field sharing that that's an important and critical use of time in intervention for students who are autistic. We have a high number right now. Safety, as always, in every day of our life is a concern, and it's been a tremendous concern this year. So I can't emphasize enough, I'm very thankful, as I know our team is, for increasing our staffing because it's really reduced. We were at a very high rate of high aggression daily. I think that number is lower now. It is not that rate, but we are really trying to make a difference.
So I'll speak to the summary a bit, and I won't read to you, but certainly the first bullet was the graph that Kim shared with you where you walked across the years to note the reduction in services of our students as they move from pre-K into K1 and 2. We are certainly grateful for the staffing changes. Pre-K really used to be, till two years ago, when those big jumps happened, we had two classes and a substantially separate one. And they each had a teacher and two TAs in it. And then we added a pre-K last school year. And then in the summer, Mike supported us, and we added a fourth pre-K this summer. And then we spread the TAs around, but those numbers were coming. So we have certainly kept the data, and I credit the entire pre-K team and Michelle for supporting us in looking at that data and really recognizing we needed to add more staff. So it says, "In process of adding two teacher assistants." They are there, they have shown up, they're jumping right in, and they're certainly a component of this program. We do need to think about, as we keep moving forward, choosing peers for the program. And recently, we've had a lot of kids who have come in as peers because they hear about the program that are sometimes themselves, once they're enrolled, they end up in a place where we might need to do a screening, or we might need to provide some more supports because they were at risk of peers for one reason or another. Certainly, the research is clear that preschool education is critical and helps build that foundation for our kids for K1 and 2. The budget challenges, and I have this conversation every year, and you all know, we're starting our budget process in October. And as Kim mentioned and Michelle mentioned, we have kids who come to pre-K and they start when they turn three. So they turn three in October, starting in October. They turn three in January, they start then. So that enrollment is constantly rolling. And for some, we know they may come. For some, we have no idea. They've just moved here, they've gone to a doctor for a physical, and then the doctor sends a referral over to us. So we do have kids that, that we don't know are out there despite doing child find, all those things. So daycare referrals is important to mention. The other preschools on island will contact Kim and the team to ask some questions or almost do a little child find that way. I can't credit Kim and the entire pre-K team enough for all the work that they try to do to be forward-thinking, and it's a guessing game sometimes. So they just, every year, they keep taking a crack at it and trying to provide that information as we try to do that budget in October. They are great about keeping data to support why they need what they need. And we are beyond grateful for the support we've been given that we know is not always delineated in our budget because we, in August, were hiring a new pre-K teacher. And in October, we're hiring more TAs. So we are beyond grateful for the additional supports that are recognized by school committee, by the superintendent, supported by our Director of Special Services, and thank goodness they're there because it will help us get back to, or closer to, the amazing work that's always been done in the pre-K.
Just to add to that, I know you all know I've been in the district for a long time. So I can tell you, every single year, every single year of my career, I think we have had to revamp or relook or predict out two to three years and predict out two to three more. So it's not unusual, every year we do that. But I will say, and I think I've really tried to, being the old girl at the table with my preschool team, to really emphasize how important we need to be fiscally responsible as well as educationally responsible. We don't like having a lot of extra people around to direct or do nothing because preschool is really fun. I don't know if you've hung out with a three-year-old lately, but they are super fun. And so you don't wanna have anyone not looking like they're having fun or not doing something. So we are a busy, active group, and doing what we know is the right thing for all of us. But I just wanted to emphasize that we do. Every single year, we're constantly reinventing what's going on.
It's really important to mention that we go to, Kim, and we've done that in the eight years I've been here. And Nancy Miller assisted us all those years before, really tried to come up with programs and be appealing to our entire community. And sometimes what happens to us is we're creating that program based on what we have or what we're asking for in October, what gets approved here. And, and sometimes we're too late to be, to be pulling other peers in. So to their credit, the pre-K team spent today making a plan for how we'll be able to roll out what our pathways will look like in January, when those parents are actually searching and making deposits in other places. So we're gonna do things a little bit different this coming school year, or the school year we're in for next school year. And we'll do it earlier so that hopefully that will assist us in attracting peers as well.
I'm just gonna add, if I, through the chair, if I may. There are, there are two other pieces that we didn't mention here. And one is that space is going to become a problem soon. We think that we've got all kinds of room in NES. And as we've added, we've gone from two preschool programs to four in the last two years. They have the room to make some of this happen, but this is why the renovation to the central office is critical, to be able to bring ELL and special ed offices and the conference room back over, giving them three more classrooms. So just thought it would be appropriate because space is, is always going to be an issue as you develop programs. I guess that was, I'll leave it at that.
On the child search, do you know what percentage of the kids was born on the island? Because we know how many kids are born at children's school.
So we use that information, but it... I could find out in terms of how many students coming in preschool were born in Nantucket?
Because that would give you, I mean, you're always gonna have some kids moving in, but I mean, it would give you sort of a rough number.
But not, but not all of them will come to Pathways. Certainly not all of them will be, will have a disability, thank goodness. Yeah, it would give us, I mean, an idea in terms of what our maximum number would be, especially if we ever do go to a universal preschool. We would definitely wanna know how many of those kids are here that are four years old. I mean, even just beginning of school, we had, you know, family moved in with two, one on an IEP and one in referral. So boom, now we have two more. That just happened September 2nd. But we can certainly find out how many are, were born in Nantucket.
And we've used that information because kindergarten is often a guessing game, too. So we've used that information to anticipate pre-K somewhat, but as Michelle said, they don't all come to us. And we've used it trying to anticipate K. But between July and August, every year that I've been here, we've added 10 to 15 kids, except for the third grade group that's next year's third grade.
Yeah, the cohort survival information we used to get didn't ever seem to anticipate what's happening.
Right.
The other thing that I should mention is that this is another reason why we need to continue the special ed stabilization fund that we started last year. We did that essentially for residential placements, but these are unanticipated students that we weren't expecting. And so we may be able to go to that fund because it's, it's difficult. When you have to add a teacher and two assistants after the budget process, the task is to say, "Okay, where?" And we don't want to have to rob from Peter to pay Paul. So that fund will undoubtedly come into play in, in the near future.
First of all, thank you for the work that you do because I have had the opportunity to be in your classroom. It is amazing what you and your team do for the most vulnerable population in our school. I'm just curious because I remember years back, it was not the difficulty of finding typical students. So what do you think some of the barriers, why, why do you think that parents are not signing up for the preschool program?
So I think one of the things to consider is the number of students with disabilities has increased. Threefold from, from one year, when we were 10, now we have 31. So now we need that many more peers to make the ratios correct. So I think the numbers of students with disabilities has increased. So that is like my first thought.
Sure. I think, I think the numbers, because our identified kids are so high, we need more. I think transportation is an issue for a lot of families, even though it's running around. I think that is tricky for some families who really could benefit from coming. I also think we've been a little late in the last couple of years on advertising and getting our peers in or having the program designed. That's why we were really grateful today to, we powered through an eight-hour day and made sure that we had a plan that looked really great and could be looked at from you and from the admin to tell us, "Please go ahead and let's do it now." Because it seems like the community preschools are taking their deposits by like January.
Yep.
People know where their kids are gonna be in September and January. And we kind of wavered a little bit last year and the year before on what the plan was gonna look like and what we were gonna be doing. So, I mean, the fee is very reasonable. People love, the people that are in it get it. We're in the building. They're getting acclimated to the, the elementary school. It makes that kindergarten leave for peers, it makes that kindergarten leave absolutely a little less scary for the parents and a lot less scary for the kids. So I don't think we are missing people. I think our numbers are high.
And I understand you've partnered with the community.
Yes, and that's been great.
Tracy and Robert's for doing that extended desk.
Because a lot of parents do wanna full-day programs.
Yep.
But I wonder then, for some of your students who are on IEPs transferring to the program, they're going to need similar support. Maybe not services because you've serviced them during the morning. But I'm wondering, and that's something we should think about, if those numbers are increasing that dramatically and they're moving over to the community school, that's just a consideration of, because the needs are not being met, right? And safety is, so... And then are you still able to do your outreach? I know years back, you were going out to preschools, you were doing your screenings. You and Jody would always do your screenings. Is that still happening? And if you have enough support?
So the screenings are the child find. We're doing that in-house, and we have a clinic that we run on Friday mornings in the classroom. We don't go out, but certainly most of the childcare is through Pauline and Tracy sort of filter them to myself and our team. And we do a lot of sort of sprinkle support that way, but we don't go into the...
Well, I've been going to a couple of... So for, as part of the transition visits with the students in early intervention, so I'll do that transition meeting in the home, meet the family, meet the child in their own environment. They mostly have those in the morning, and the preschool teachers are working with kids in the morning. So they're not available to do it as much as I try to make myself comfortable to do that.
And I know it was valuable, and I'm sure the community school's still doing it, but sending somebody out to also help preschools with strategies and implementation of some of the shadowing, if they can, of your skills so that they know how to help students who may not necessarily qualify for an IEP, but could help. Because I, we know of those terrible stories of students being released from preschools because of behavior or of the stimulation, so...
It would certainly help them if they reached out to us when there was, I mean...
They participate in team meetings with us sometimes. They come over and participate in those meetings with us. And I know that you have certainly shared behavior plans and work over the years, both you and Jody have shared different plans for how to support kids.
And some of the students come to us and then they go to that program.
And you touched upon transportation for the typical peer. But for a student who's identified, no matter where they live, do they qualify for transportation?
Pre-School. And whether they need to go home to a sitter, to another childcare, right? The bus takes them. For the identified kids, but the peers don't have.
They don't have that.
They don't have that.
Thank you. Thanks, Tim.
Again, I wanna emphasize, Pauline, thank you so much. I think having the knowledge and the courage makes it easier, I'm sure, for you because that age group, the needs, is very, very important. I'm concerned, though, that how do we know everyone knows that you exist? Is there concern for that group? Because like anything else, somebody can say, "Oh yeah, I'm in this program, blah, blah, blah." And then the next person says, "Well, I didn't know that existed." So how much of that do you think is still out there, given what you know?
I think they have a really good reputation, Pathways. And like Kim said, she's worked here for a long time, has built up the reputation. I reach out to doctors' offices and the private schools and under the child find. Put in notices in the newspaper.
We're always at the child fair, that's the hospital.
What about the language barrier for people that don't speak English?
I think in the papers, in Spanish as well. Yeah.
So you feel like maybe that number isn't as high as it could look, given the fact that I think a third of our school is non-English speaking students, or...
Well, I wouldn't say non-English speaking, right.
Which is the first word. Which is a big number for a small island.
I think we're really fortunate. We have a couple of people who really understand our program, and they reach out to families critically. And there's a lot of things that go on through the community school on Saturdays and their child programs, they all promote us. We try to be visible to their parent workshops and... We try to be visible to their parent workshops and their teacher workshops. So, I think we're, we're trying websites, you know, things like that. We're trying to get our, get a little more, it's like you can only reach the, you know...
Right.
Want to be reached, yeah. But I love it, we get a lot of referrals, and I'm always surprised, how did you get to me? Oh, okay, that works.
Sorry, a couple of questions. Do you have any idea why this is trending up as much as it is, like the 31 kids now? It makes me think next year it might be 50.
There will be 27 IEPs that we know of in pre-K next year.
Today.
As of today, right, that's what we know.
Not including early intervention referrals.
So, it's remaining pretty high, then?
We usually have about 10 to 12 that end up being eligible from early intervention, and then, like I said, the move-ins, the ones that are identified, sometimes the peers are identified, or the doctor referrals, or the parent referrals. In terms of why, I think, you know, the population area is growing, we have, you know, autism is on the rise, we have kids with language delays and some kids that are exposed to trauma.
So, you may be identifying more needs than have been identified in the past? Could be part of it, yeah?
I don't think we're over-identifying, I think...
I'm not suggesting that.
Right, they have, they need the services and, yeah, right, they're out there.
And I think the education's there. I think people aren't educated on what services need to kind of come into play at an early age. I think in the past, people kind of waited, and now people are seeing that, the research shows, get in there. If they're not doing something, let's just take a peek, and let's get them going, get them in a social group or...
I also had a numbers question where it says one teacher to seven students. Does teacher mean adult? That would be teachers and assistants. Did your recent hirings change that number, or is that...
Now, for this year, yep.
With the two new hires, it's one to seven?
No, no, it's one to five.
Okay, that's what I wanted, good.
That's what we're grateful for.
Yep, okay, and I was, I was saved one question by Mike. If we can use this, I'll call it an emergency fund in the event that more staffing is needed, because if it isn't used, useful for that appropriately, we need to hear from you.
I do feel like just this year, we've reaped the benefits of the pre-K revolver that was larger in a different time, and certainly Michelle has advocated for us. Because the other thing is, these are little, little children. We are not sending little, little children to collaboratives, or if we lived in America, it might look different, they may not be in our school. And so, we have reaped the benefits of getting support to be able to provide those interventions, and this year, it didn't start that way, but we're in a much better place right now. It's important also to mention that this early intervention work starts certainly in pre-K, and for some of our kids, they're with Kim and the team for three years, or two and a half years. So, that's fantastic because they're getting repeated practice, and they know the routine, and then they come back in September, and some kids stay in the summer. And so, that contributes to taking some services off as kids age up because they've had all that intervention that's consistent and strong and...
Great, thanks.
That can also increase the number because they come in at three, they're still there when they're four, they're still there when they're turning five after September, so they have like three grade levels.
So, I'm wondering, 30 L students, do we have bilingual teachers, or are we relying on translators?
So, one of the things that we felt was really important this year, especially when we were given the opportunity to hire new staff, is our two new TAs are Spanish-speaking. And so, that's largely the non-English speaking group in pre-K, and so that has certainly assisted in three of our pre-K classrooms.
That's fantastic. I can see that that would be huge help.
And then, Jocelyn from the community school and Nancy from Michelle's office do support us with team meetings, parent meetings, things like that to help translate there.
And then, once they go to kindergarten, they receive...
Yeah, but now they've been exposed to English instruction.
And Nancy and Jocelyn have done a great job at really learning our program and knowing what we do and being able to sit and, because that's a really difficult thing. You have a three-year-old and you're coming in to visit us as this big team, and there's that language, and they've been really terrific at meeting with me and sort of like getting, wait, what happens? Okay, and how does it work? What's the, what's the program? Okay, so then when we sit at the table, there's a little bit of confidence, but also a calm that kind of goes with that, so that's been helpful.
And then we have interpreters, obviously, at the team meetings, too.
Thank you so much for everything.
Just one more thought, not really a question to the panel, but if we do universal pre-K and we're growing this rapidly, and you just said space is an issue, that's gonna, could presumably be an issue, right? Or...
Sure, Ken.
I was gonna wait for the superintendent's report to ask what the status of that construction is. Is it such that more space will be available at NES by September?
No.
No.
I would, that's probably my biggest disappointment heading out, is that I didn't get that done for this coming September. But, I mean, building on the island, it takes time, you have permitting, you have design, you have all of these levels, and we have a meeting Thursday with Capcom again to explain to them the urgency that we have. I'm hoping that we will, you know, get some, the foundation work started in the very near future. I just, could we get lucky and have it done by August? Maybe, but we can't count on it, and so, and we have enough other needs in the budgets that we'll be presenting to you that I'm not sure that we could pull it off financially because that would take all of our financial focus just to get that one thing done when everybody's lining up with other requests. So, you know, we won't get that done, but, but, you know, we have a plan, it's going to make a big difference, and as our numbers have increased in the preschool, then the jump to universal preschool won't be as large because we already have so many four-year-olds in the preschool program. So, that will be kind of interesting to see. I don't know if we will need, you know, three or four preschool teachers to pull it off, but it won't be six because of the additions that we've made.
Because we have five right now.
Right.
Five pre-Ks right now. Not universal, but five pre-K classrooms.
So, it is, there are so many unknowns, particularly with this group, more so than, I mean, the eighth graders coming into the high school, we have a pretty good idea from CPS and the two private schools, how many numbers we might have. For incoming three-year-olds, we do a lot of work to find out, but it is a, it's a big question mark each year, and so we're reacting each year in the fall, which is what we've done for the last three years. We react, it's hard to be proactive with that because you could have too many staff members on. Probably, probably not.
No such thing.
But...
And to be honest, it's not the only space needs that we need because we see it at the middle school and coming into the high school. So, it's gonna be an interesting next year and a few years out, just to educate about our needs, our space needs, again.
Great.
Yeah. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
We ought to actually talk about this search stuff tonight, are we?
I don't know if he's gonna give a quick report of your committee.
Oh, okay.
Martin, why don't you come on this side, Zona's there.
Thank you. Good evening. Tonight, we start, this is the start of the budget process. It's very early, obviously, and it's a preliminary projection, but we always start with the roll-forward number, and that's the number that it would cost us to move existing contractual agreements and expenditures into the future year without additions, on the base of contracts signed and whether it's employment or vendor contracts. So, for fiscal year 19, as you know, our budget was $28,819,642, which breaks into 82.8% payroll at $23.6 million, and 18% operating expenses at close to $5.2 million. The increase to move forward the payroll, the salary budget is $882,447, and that represents a 3.7% increase. The decrease that you see of $133, as you might remember, last year when we were given a budget number from the town, $133,000 were dedicated for computer equipment, and that is a one-time increase. It's not, it's not gonna be part of our budget moving forward, so that's why we're removing it from the close to $5.2 million, and we're projecting without increases, a $5,057 operating expense budget. That represents a 2.6% decrease. Now, we'll be looking forward to probably increase that number, but this is just to move, I just wanted to make sure that you understand, this is just to move forward the budget without additions. So, that puts us at $29.5 million just to roll forward, and we start from here. We've had preliminary meetings with Superintendent Cosart and the administrative staff, so it's, the budget has started, I know we present in a month, and we are waiting to hear from town what our number will be, so.
Is this the number you, this is the preliminary number that you guys are gonna present to them?
This is just a roll-forward. We obviously have received from each school and from each department within the school additions, expense increase requests, whether it's personnel, whether it's operating expense. So, that number we're gonna go through, and we'll fine-tune when we get the number from town. So, that's...
Just to maybe put it in perspective, Zona, each year our roll-forward, probably in the last five or six years, has been somewhere between $500,000 to now the $750,000. That's the largest roll-forward that we've had. It makes sense that it's larger because the enrollment has gone up and the staffing to meet that enrollment has gone up. So, it's not shocking. Where it gets to be concerning is that for several years, the appropriation has been about a million each year, with the exception of the year that we opened up NIS, and it was 1.4 million because they knew that we were going to have expenses like custodial staff, new administrator, school nurse, and librarian. So, that was the largest appropriation that they have given us, and last year it was back closer to a million. So, if they, if the appropriation is a million, for example, then we only have $250,000 of new money to play with, play with, that's probably not to use on needs. I expect that the school district will push hard for it to be more than a million, given the enrollment increases that have continued, but I don't see it probably meeting all the requests that we're putting together. But we do that each year. We go through, look at the needs, each department and each school put forward the needs that they have, and we typically then have to bring that, prioritize and bring that, those lists down and decide, okay, I know that we need this, 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 and this, what are the most important things? So, each department and each school administration has been asked to prioritize the lists that they've given us so far. And of course, as I did when I was principal, everybody wants all of their requests, you know? I understand that because they're advocating for their department or for their school. But it's central office's job to take all of that in and make some of the harder decisions about how much we can allocate to where. So, we will start on the first December meeting with community school, athletics, facilities and technology as we have typically, and then at the second December meeting, we'll have the four schools' ELL, special ed present, and I'm, we're going to present some things, I'm going to allow them to present some things that won't add up to our appropriation so that you can see what the needs are, as long as you understand that it's not going to meet most likely the appropriation unless they, the appropriation is up $2 million.
Question, remind me of what was the result of last year's budget being the appropriation? Did they make it cut back more or not as much?
I want to think it was 1.1 or 1.2, and then the $133,000...
That's a one point, yes.
Was on top of that 1.2.
Yeah.
So, if they, they gave us 1.2 million, then that's $450,000 of new money to put towards personnel requests or operating requests. So, it really, you know, I think when asked last year by FinCom, I think I sort of put them on notice that the coming year, we would push the envelope, but I was thinking universal preschool. But I think we're gonna have to push that envelope without, without the universal preschool to meet, again, special ed, technology, facilities, schools, ELL, everybody has, has their needs. So, it's a process, and we'll work through it, and we'll do what we've always done and prioritize that together. Usually, it's very collaborative, even though people are advocating for their schools, and then occasionally, you know, the superintendent has to play Solomon and make, or the school committee has to do that and make the decisions about where you want to invest what we have for the appropriation.
FinCom, FinCom's at the table, right, as you're having the conversations and meeting with town, as our school committee members are going, are they at that?
No, no.
So, they can come in and tell us where the budget has been?
Yeah, and you'll see when we look at the budget calendar, and I think that's on for, oh, so I'm getting ahead of myself, but the meetings with the ad hoc budget have not been scheduled yet. And I think, to be fair to Libby, that's because she's had a special town meeting, you know, the marijuana thing, everything else, so she's had a lot on her plate, and I've, I have mentioned that the school committee will want to make sure that that ad hoc budget group gets to me. Okay?
But I agree, I think this is the, yeah, that we push the envelope, because of the needs.
We.
We. And you.
You. Yeah, well, one of my questions has already been answered, we have an ad hoc...
Yeah, well, one of my questions has already been answered, we haven't ad hocked yet. Do you have any idea yet what the state of the town's finances are?
I went to a presentation by the finance director of the town, Brian Turbit, and Libby, they did a joint revenue projection, that's where the budget starts on the town side. It's normal, it wasn't overly optimistic, it wasn't a pessimistic projection by any stretch, it was a normal presentation. They talked about increase to such things as medical insurance, which is a huge part of the budget for the whole town, and different things, but no, I don't have an idea of what they're leaning as far as how close can we get to what we need.
Because they do at some point present, don't they, to the select board projections?
Yes, they do.
And Libby will come and present to us, okay, each year. Now, typically, that has been done the second December meeting, which would be December 18. She's asked to, if we could do that at the first January meeting, which is January 8. We could do that, except for the fact that FinCom wants to meet with us soon after that, was it the 14th?
The 14th, yes.
And there's not enough time for us to do the 8th, have our budget hearing, and then meet with FinCom. So all of that's being sorted out right now, but yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you, Martin.
Mike, transportation?
Yes, just briefly, I've been in touch with Linda, we usually wait until end of October for the bus routes to sort out, and she got back to us, she said that their numbers are down, which is kind of interesting, but, you know, the airport in Old South buses have about the same, 60 to 65 students, Nobedere is about 45 to 50 students, and the Matic at Hummock Pond, about 45, and Pulpus and Sconset about 35 to 40. All buses have fewer students in the afternoon, but that is so variable based on athletics. So they've been able to combine some routes when necessary without crowding. We have had, we had a little bit of challenge going down a bus for a day here and a day there, and the typical challenge of trying to find bus drivers, and that is something that you will see across the nation, if you're, you know, reading any of the listservs or the educational blogs, there are, everybody is struggling to find bus drivers. So, but right now, knock on wood, we're in pretty good shape, and we'll see, sports teams are slowing down now, and we'll see what that means for some of those routes.
What about Nerda?
Excuse me, it's not something that we've gone to, and it's not something that we've had as a possibility until this year, when they've started to go year-round, so I think if it were a problem, that might be something that we would look at, I don't know how that might work, but...
Well, I mean, it just seems that, except for having a stop for school buses, the Nerda buses, if they're running you around, could maybe approach them on, maybe we can cut down on some of the yellow bus expenses.
It might. The problem with Nerda is it's not the same as school bus pickups, because their stops are so much more limited than what our typical, you know, school bus will do. I think the other thing, there's been a lot in the news lately about school bus accidents, and I'm sure some of you watching the news have seen some of the horrific accidents that they've had, I think Indiana and, you know, out west, and sometimes they're, the school buses involved in the accident, and sometimes it's been at a bus stop. So I don't know how that would work, Tim, I think someday that may, when Nerda gets a little bit more robust, but then you're going to have to figure out the liability piece.
I was going to say, safety concerns, I mean, school buses, you got to stop.
But they don't.
And they flash, and they're visible, et cetera.
Right.
And that's not the same with the little ones.
Yeah, they're pretty significant. No, but they don't stop, and that's part of the problem. I mean, I just see a collaboration as being very beneficial to us.
I can see that point, but we may have to put flashers on their buses, and the stop signs and stuff, you know.
Yeah, but then you run into a whole separate set of concerns. Okay. Any questions? Homeschooling report.
I think, I'll bring Michael up, but it's a pretty easy and straightforward report this year.
So it's fascinating, just that as of this moment, I have one official homeschool plan submitted to me back in September. It's on parents to submit a plan to the school. It reads within 10 days of the start of the school year. I'm usually pretty flexible and give parents till the end of the month, so I give them 30 days, end of September, but one doesn't tell the whole story. I probably had 10 conversations with families in August and September, and I was just going back and running through the names in my head, and of those 10, seven have opted for an online, state-approved, public school, which does not count as homeschooling, it's just a mere transfer from NPS to a Massachusetts state-approved online school. That was something I spoke of the first time last year, and you can see how our numbers have gone from four to two, now to one, so I could count seven names off the top of my head. And then the other three actually enrolled their students at NPS. I get involved sometimes with some assessments, you know, to help with placement, we always do start with age, so what's interesting is that a parent will tell me, okay, we're, you know, going to enroll with TECA, the Connections Academy, which is the most popular one, and it's really on them to complete that program of study. So two, three years from now, if a family decides to re-enroll their student in public school, you know, we'll ask, okay, where are the records from where the student's coming from? You know, we'll do a records request from the sending school, and if the parent doesn't have the data, didn't follow through, then we will get involved, it's okay, well, let's see where your child is and help with placement. That's pretty much my report in a nutshell. It is fascinating, it's much more than that one data point, but that's the facts of the matter at this moment.
And what do you do as an equivalent of the child fund?
So it's actually very, very much opposite. We're not required, it's not like I go through the phone book and make phone calls and knock on doors, it is on the parent, it is their responsibility to enroll their student. I do, once in a while, I'll hear, I'll get a tip, if you will, usually from a retiree or someone at the Rotary Club on Wednesdays, that, hey, I was in Stop and Shop, and I just wanted to ask this seven-year-old, you know, hey, you know, are you homesick today? Or, and many times, it's fascinating, the answer is very, oh, I'm here with my family traveling from another country, and we're looking at, maybe relocating here, we're on vacation, or, you know, we're passing through. It's fascinating, some of these families that are enrolling their students in the TECA, four of them are traveling the world, they just decided that they're taking their students on the road, and some are going, driving cross-country. I just know this because I get in touch with families through Little League and other things, that's one of my big questions, okay, great, you're online, you know, how much screen time is your child having if you're doing online? Whereas the social piece, you know, are you participating in clubs? Homeschooled students are eligible to participate in athletics, they can participate in school clubs as long as they show residency on Nantucket, so it's fascinating.
The end seems a little soft.
Meaning?
Meaning that we're presuming that those are the people, when I think the number may be larger, don't you think?
Absolutely. As a statistician, probability guy, you look at our increased population, and there's one homeschooled student, there's probably a few who are undocumented, who are sitting somewhere on this island and not attending school, and we wouldn't be aware. Again, it's on the parent, and when they decide to enroll the student, that's kind of like, all right, where have you been, what have you been doing? And we would look for data, and then we would probably assess the student, help place the student appropriately.
Mike, you have a...
I just was going to say, it's not only a child that might be undocumented, oftentimes it may be somebody who makes that decision based on their religion, and so they may, they may go under the radar as well, and the only way that we have to find out is through sort of that tip line.
Question for Mike, this is number of students.
Yeah, right.
So like in 2016, 17, there were four students in Fort Evergreen.
Yep.
That's the idea. I kind of feel like Tim, too, is a little soft, and here's my question, what about the kids? It's up to the parent to report it, but what if, is ignorance bliss, is willful blindness the way to go? Do you hear what I'm saying? Not to add more to our plate, but if you know, if you run across, and what is the police doing about this? You see a seven-year-old kid in the middle of the day, hopefully they're not sickening in the Stop and Shop, but what is, do you require proof that they are visiting, that they don't live here and function here? I don't know, it's a good question. But what if this kid's been kidnapped, and they just didn't make the milk carton?
Well, I don't know, I think willful blindness is a bit harsh, because I don't, I don't think that we know and willingly don't follow up, and, but, but in all honesty, there certainly could be students out there, and the homeschooling lobby has it stacked in the favor of any parent who wants to homeschool their child, and all they have to do is, you know, inform us, essentially, they don't have to get permission from us, so it's, it's hard. I would imagine, and I mean, that could be a question for the SROs, what do police officers do when they see somebody?
There are secretaries each building involved, there's guidance councils involved, administrators involved, I double-checked, triple-checked, had conversations, quadruple-checked. We have really good processes in place, withdrawal forms, when parents withdraw their student, they have to write, where are you going? And then if we don't get a records request, you know, from the school they said they're going, we follow up, and we would basically would report them. In my third year now in this homeschool liaison, you can basically put homeschool students in three categories, as you can many times, a lot of students are doing right what they're supposed to be doing, they're getting a full rich program from a parent or a sibling or aunt or uncle, and they'll return to public school when they're ready, and they'll be right where they need to be. In the lower category, there's some students who aren't quite getting it done and not quite doing six hours a day of work, which, you know, they're supposed to submit a plan of 900 hours for elementary, 990 for high school. These online programs are no joke, you know, it's on your permanent record, if you take a test, there's no curves, there's no extra help, there's no retests, it's on your record. But then homeschool also gives, in the top end, parents some flexibility, parents who want to go at accelerated pace. Some of the students who are right now withdrew from our district really want to go two or three grade levels in one year, and they feel like they have the capacity and home support and setup to do that, and it allows them flexibility without having to pay a private school or a tutor, that they're going to accelerate through two or three years, which is why it's fascinating, when you really get into it, if the student comes back in high school, what grade level are they in? You know, are they a 15-year-old senior? It's interesting, and that ends up being probably on the, like you said, the end, that's probably the most interesting aspect of this, is when the student, if they do, return to the public school district.
And then do we put them where they fit grade-wise or age-wise?
So we start with age, and then we go from there with, okay, let's look at the plan, what have you been doing, and we'll do some assessing and placement. It's a team conversation, in terms of, we want to find out how we can best meet someone's needs, but, you know, lots of scenarios, lots of variables are possible, every situation is so different.
Are they only required to check in with you just at the beginning of the school year?
No, twice a year, so, and it's great, because the homeschool policies are pretty consistent state to state, so if a family moves here, and they don't want to put their child in any one of the three schools on the island, and they know, oh, who's the homeschool liaison? They call the central office, get Logan, Logan forward something to me, and have a conversation, it's, okay, you know, get me something in writing a plan by the end of September. And then just a reminder, please submit a progress report by the end of June. So in June, the families will submit, okay, I completed this, 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 and this, they'll download certificates, sometimes they use websites, and it has actual tests and student work, pieces of writing, books that they read, field trips that they've had, it's fascinating. What's great about that is I found, that's my starting point, those are the names, if they don't get back to me by September 15th, I start calling, okay, where are you? And like I said, some have opted for the online private school, some have moved away, some are traveling the world and continuing with the online, so they do it twice a year.
Okay, but if they are doing online schooling, they're technically not considered homeschool, so they technically, you're not required to check in with them, right? I mean, so you don't necessarily receive progress reports from those students who are at home claiming to be taking online...
So that's on the family to complete, but I looked at it very closely, when they complete the online school, it is very thorough, you know, when a student were to come back, and they do successfully complete, they could hand me a packet, it's all done out, which is why parents opt for it, and it's very cheap, if not free, in many places, that they'll give me a packet of information, but like I said, that's their permanent record, you know, and everything's pretty much online, you know, they're taking tests, so that's a fit for some students, not a fit for everyone, which is why I'd hope to say, I had three good conversations, like, hey, you know, we offer a very rich experience here at Nantucket Public Schools, please give us a shot before you pull your student out of the district.
So do we have any authority, or could we have a district policy requiring families who are claiming to do, or who are doing schooling at home, not homeschooling, but through online programs, to check in? Could we have a district policy, or, I mean, I guess you can't, there's no, there's no way to keep track.
You can't.
Here's a question, sorry to interrupt, I guess I know of a student that maybe sort of did that, but wanted to come back and march with her graduating class, that wasn't allowed to do that, is that a true statement?
I wouldn't know the specifics unless, you know, we're able to research, to talk to Dr. Bucky, but I imagine any one of these scenarios is possible. The other thing that doesn't show here is that this number fluctuates a lot during the year, okay? So last year, if it was two, when I reported a year ago in November, it was actually probably five in April. Some students withdrew and put their students on homeschool plans for April, May, June, submitted progress report. I can say, all those students have since returned to Nantucket High School.
Homeschooling gets, I'm sorry, gets far more difficult as the student gets into those high school years, so it's not uncommon for parents or for children to enroll in those high school years, and then after 16, you know, the regulations on homeschooling change.
Steve?
Yeah, just following up on what Tim was asking, we can't ask for progress reports, why?
There's just nothing written in any regulations, I mean, I don't want to say what you can and cannot do, but, you know, whether it's something you make a policy, whether you're allowed to, I have to look into it a little bit further, right now, there's nothing.
You're not aware of a statute or a regulation...
That prevents you, no.
That says, once they've chosen homeschooling, you got to leave them alone.
They would argue that they're not a student and therefore don't fall under the policies of the Nantucket Public Schools. That would be their argument, and I think it would hold up.
Here's a fascinating...
How do you regulate somebody that's not yours?
Similar to that statement, it's fascinating, I had to make this call last year, there are some students who were on homeschooling plans last year who left the middle school and... in the spring. They wanted their students to take MCAS. Okay? They wanted to get that assessment report, just so they have that data to see, okay, are we on the right track? And I was like, hey, that, fine, right? No big deal, come in, join the group, we'll put you in a small room, call the state, and the state said, absolutely not. They said, a homeschooled student cannot take MCAS, which was fascinating to me.
But think about how that could affect our scores too, though.
Either way.
And they can take, this is where other assessments, like MAP, measures of academic progress, would be good, will give you some good information. So, they could avail themselves of some of our other assessments.
What is the question? Are they allowed to take SAT or ACT?
Of course, that's private.
Anybody.
I mean, I think it's interesting, just because nobody can give you a number how many people live in the island.
Seventeen thousand, according to the data platform, right?
Well, it depends which one you take. I mean, whether you're going to measure the number of toilet rolls, or affluent, or whatever. But it's always fascinated me that nobody really knows the N on this, and what the real number is. And I think it's, but again, it's a very powerful lobby, and I think we're going to crash in flames.
Can I ask one more question? So, the students who are registered online for schooling programs, you mentioned Teca, are they able to come and participate in school activities or sports? Or are they just completely separate?
No, they may.
Resident, yep. We even had a.
That's a charter school, though, like Teca. So, they want to, they shouldn't, isn't that a different school?
When I looked a year ago and researched this for a student who want to come and play sports, and since they don't offer it, and the student is a resident taxpayer in our district, they're eligible to participate. We even had a student, Dr. Cohen, was very flexible, wanted to take a language class. And we let, the student came in, just took that one class a day. Now, it's not something we want to advertise, per se, because then you get all these combinations. Just remember, this graph is eight in reality, okay? There are seven that are currently online, enrolled in the online.
Right.
State-approved public school, online.
And do they, if I may, have to provide you with some proof of that, or you just take their word for it?
That is just the same as if they transferred to Barnstable, or Nassett, or Martha's Vineyard. They're no longer enrolled in Nantucket Public Schools. If they come back, we would ask for the reports when they come back. And then we start that new conversation. What have you been doing? You know, where are you? And then what is best for placement?
So, ex post facto.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thanks, Mike. Yep.
Thank you very much.
Okay. Elections site discussion.
This is something that you asked to be put on the parking lot, and I thought today would be a good day to have it on the agenda. I know that at various times, there's been a conversation about whether we should have the elections and special elections in the school building. Actually, today's election doesn't create the challenge because we always take this day for professional development day. So, in terms of having it here for the November date, I don't think that that's a problem. But other days do present a problem when school is in session. And you wanted to have that conversation, so, how about it?
Has the town brought a request? Have they formally talked about going to the VFW, or wherever it is?
They have talked about it. We had the challenge on the first day of school this year, which really created a discussion, a hubbub across the Commonwealth, because we weren't alone in saying, are you kidding? And I think that the town officials would have changed that if they could have. But it couldn't be done at that point, because you have to have the site approved by, I think, the Attorney General's Office. So, it needs to be sorted out ahead of time. But I think if you wanted to, you could, the best that you could do would be to make a recommendation to the town of Nantucket officials that any elections other than the first Tuesday.
I'll gladly start us off by confusing the issue. Well, because I'm of two minds. You know, as a social studies, history, government teacher, I was happy to have those elections here. I could say that, I could wear my sticker and talk to them about it when I went back after lunch, or whenever it was. Ask them to take a look on their way to band, or chorus, or whatever, because they go right through that lobby to get there. So, I can see those advantages to having them here. But now, looking at it from a safety and security point of view, we discussed previously having to close off corridors, and have somebody at the back doors, and so on. I mean, stay away from the parking issues. So, I'm looking forward to hearing what you all think.
I think a conversation, or special meeting, whatever you call it, needs to be had with two or three viable locations, relocations for. Town, school, if it's still a viable, because there's an idea. What about the new gym at NIS? Doesn't, is a separate kind of sort of building, has two separate entry exits. It wouldn't have to, it wouldn't co-mingle the students so much, is my thought. They're younger, but, just because it's almost freestanding, if you will. But just a general meeting conversation is saying, we really need to relocate the election site. And the simple factors as to why, and bringing to the table owners of the alternate sites. That's my thought.
Pauline?
I would agree, and I agree with you, Steve, as well. I'm torn, because I think the education piece is wonderful and great and valid, but not at the expense of the safety of our kids. And I think times have changed. And I just think that having an open building, when we've worked so hard on the security piece of that, it would, it just is frightening to think of what could happen. And I think your idea of perhaps the gym, or a single, free building is great, because I think if that could work, that's a nice option.
But I'm pretty sure that young students would be co-mingling the outside. That could be a problem.
If I may, I can think that right away.
Take that off the table.
Parking over there is worse than the parking here. So, sorry.
Okay. We'll take that off the table. Then, I would support moving it elsewhere. Yeah. I'd find if we have professional development days and we're closed, like we were today, but not while students are in the building.
Yeah, April's always a concern.
This has always been a passionate conversation of mine to move it, just for the safety and security piece. It's always been.
It's a conversation we had. You've got this big building out yonder. I don't know what the status of it is, who owns it, who doesn't own it, type thing, but plenty of parking. If nerd is year-round, there's the transportation issue, kind of sort of resolved. Maybe for the day, you can get a round-trip ticket somewhere there and back, just for that day. They can do special pricing. Anyway, I'm done.
So, what would be the next step? We've had our discussion. I feel like we're all on board.
How about, if I were to make a motion that we recommend to the town?
Oh, sorry, we didn't hear you.
I got to set this. I mean, I think using this building and arranging the school calendar around it, quite frankly. I think there's parking and access issues that this building affords that I can't quite think of anyplace else. I think the VFW is a wonderful building, if it were located out in the middle of the football field, but otherwise, access is limited.
Talking about the new VFW, though.
Yeah, the new VFW. Well, the Legion, or whatever.
Those are two different things.
Yeah.
There's one in town, and then there's one off.
Run for Robbins home site. I think that the school is centrally located. It's easily accessible, easily recognizable. I think that on, I think in two years, there will be a very heated election. Wouldn't want the kids around. Probably keep them out for a couple of days. But I think you could arrange the school calendar. I was just going to ask Mike and the administrators if, is there a professional day in that timeframe that could be scheduled for Election Day, the way we do in November?
So, I, because it's so variable, I mean, look at what happened on the first day of school. We had no lead time whatsoever. And if I might suggest, you could have the town develop an alternative site and have it approved, so that they have that in their hip pocket, approved if they needed to go to it based on some day. But you will, you'll never be able to do your calendar a year out or so, which is something that you wanted to do, and it can extend the school year. Every day that you take that you're not planning on, you still have to get to 180, and so you're going to be pushing the end of the year.
But are there not already scheduled professional days?
There are.
That could be used for that?
No. What we have done is, we front-loaded, what, four professional days? We have the day in November as five, and October, which is the Cape Cod Collaborative Day. So, that's it. We only have two established during the year.
We missed the opportunity today, because we could have all been standing at every entrance with a clipboard, asking somebody how they would feel about going, would you have gone to vote at Tom Nevers today?
It's okay.
Is that, is that what's going to drive your decision?
New South Road.
No, but I think it's good information to have. I mean, we can, we're five, six people, and we're obviously have a vested interest in the school and our students. That's not necessarily going to be the case for the community. So, it would be, it wouldn't change my opinion, but I think it's, would be good information to have. And if, I would be pleasantly surprised if 90% of the people who voted today said, yes, I would have gone out to Tom Nevers.
Well, see, I speculate to the contrary, and think that most people think this is a nice central location.
It is.
Everybody knows where the school is. Everybody's, lives or works, it seems, within a few hundred yards of here.
Well, so is everything on Nantucket, but I think if, maybe the town meeting would be a place to get that.
Right.
Explaining the concerns for student safety, and all that sort of thing. I think if people stop and think about the reasons why, they'd be more prone to, well, number one, would you go if it's there? If transportation was provided for you, blah, blah, blah. That's, to me, there's pieces of it that would be, to me, an obvious yes. Absolutely, why not? If voting is important to you, you find a way to get there. People that live in the city, and so forth, I mean, they have to take a train to go vote, maybe. They can't, all necessarily walk down the block. It's the kid's safety. You don't know who's going to, everybody is a registered voter. They could also be a registered sex offender. That's just a thought. I'm just, you know, the reality is of it, the world isn't what it used to be.
No, I don't think there's an easy answer.
Yeah.
So, could we next step, bring the powers that be, or that we, who we'd have, need to have a conversation with, or should have a conversation with, to say, can we just sit and discuss this?
No, I think having a discussion with the town, but then you have to go to the Board of Elections. And who is the Secretary of State? Secretary of State or the Attorney General? No, Secretary of State, Galvin. Galvin. Galvin is the one in charge.
I'm sorry. Was this going to be all about?
No, I mean, it's, I just think that people are used to this, and I think, from my perspective, there's got to be ways to work around it. If you're corridor off.
People are used to the old hospital, too. Things changed, Tim.
We'll see if for the better. I don't know. So, why don't we see if we can arrange a discussion with the town about this? Everybody in favor of that?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay. Community discussion, votes to be taken. Vote to approve the district goals. I move to do so. I have to, all of the changes we discussed.
Let's have a discussion.
Have been, yeah, have been included.
Yeah. Yeah, I think, I had sent Mike an email. I had asked for the cultural awareness, please add in, which he did, add in for number three. And then, I wanted to tease it out a little bit more, but I think with Mike's guidance, some of my thoughts, and I think this does belong more in the school plans, maybe the individual schools, but I was looking at more ways of measurement to increase minority students, enrolling in AP classes, honors classes, applying to college, that sort of piece of where I was also going with that. But I think we feel like that is more.
I did share that with John Bucky and Peter Cohen, because I think that's where it's primarily talking about, and they can consider that in their school improvement plans.
And this specifically references encouraging students to participate in advanced work options, so.
Mm-hmm. But Owen, I was happy with the additions that we all made in the last meeting.
Can I have a motion approved? So, moved.
Second.
Zona?
With a comment, I guess. I mean, I like it. It's just, when you say diverse students, what do you mean? Why can't we just say all students? Why, why do you have to pick out a group or a class?
Yeah, where are you?
Right here. One D I I, on page one. I just need that meaning, you know, explained to me, so that I feel just a little bit more comfortable.
Well, I wrote it that way in response to Pauline's request. I think that there's a lot of different kinds of diversity, and I think that that could mean socioeconomic diversity. It could mean ethnic diversity, racial diversity. You know, you can, you can keep going down that line, and you could argue that everybody, you know, it's a diverse population, which doesn't incorporate everybody. I tried to write it rather than single out.
The interpretation of that is just that.
Right.
There's no specific class, race.
Right.
But all students should be approached and, you know, convinced that, you know, if you think you can do it, follow me, let's do it, and work it out. I just don't want, you know, any student to feel like they're being discriminated against. Well, someone said was asked, why wasn't I asked? Do you know what I mean?
I do, and then, I read it exactly the opposite when I saw it first.
But given the interpretation.
I hear what you're saying. But it could just be acknowledging that we have a diverse population.
Yeah. That's the open-minded way to look at it, but it's just not the way everyone looks at it. So, as long as that's understood, I'm good with it.
And can I just ask one question? We don't have indicators of success for E. Under number one.
I actually thought that that, maybe that should belong as an indicator of success for one of the other A through D.
Yeah, okay.
I could move it over to that other side and make it maybe.
And you didn't change the date, like you said you would?
I did. November 6, 2018.
Mine says 19.
Mine says 18.
Mine says 18.
Yours says 18.
Mine says 18.
On one page it says 18, the other says 19. So, is that how I should look at it?
We'll make sure when it goes up on the website, it says, because I did change it.
Can I ask what you were talking about doing? Taking one A?
No, E.
Oh, one E.
Move it over here.
I have a totally different one.
Yeah, I think moving E under.
Can we have a motion to approve it as amended?
So moved.
Second.
Steve?
I guess.
I guess.
Okay. Three yeses and two guesses.
I mean, it has to be worded slightly.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. A vote to approve the budget planning calendar.
A vote to approve the budget planning calendar.
Since that was last given to you, we have put a few more dates in there. We have the town meeting has been determined that it will be Monday, April 1, and possibly the 2nd, if it goes over, as it has sometimes. And then we have that date, a tentative date for the school budget hearing. That's much earlier.
Yeah.
And I just don't know that we can get all of that in, and so that's why I'm waiting. Those things could change.
Well, and we didn't have a budget review with the town in Nantucket today, did we?
Budget review.
I'm looking at today's date. Budget review with town in Nantucket?
Right.
So is that being moved somewhere else? We just don't know yet what the date is?
Yep.
So do we approve the intent?
I think you approve it with the understanding that there will be changes.
So moved.
Second?
Yeah, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I mean, Tim and Jen are attending these, right? These are budget meetings that will be?
I think it's Tim, uh, sorry, I think it's myself and Steve.
Oh, you and Steve, okay.
I am not retired like Steve. A vote to approve the donation from Hayward Photography to CPS gift account in the amount of $1,823.66.
So moved.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? A vote to approve the donation from Hayward Photography, Inc. to NES gift account in the amount of $2,791.99.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, just a question, is this, I see, nope, it says it right in here. It's a percentage of their sales?
Yeah.
That comes back to us every year?
Yes.
Okay, a vote to approve the October 30th meeting minutes.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Transfers and invoices.
Make a motion to accept transfers and invoices?
Second.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Superintendent's report.
Typically, at this time of year, I give you a graph of the federal grants. You can see that you have this year's figures as compared to last year's figures, and the IDEA grant is the Individuals and Disabilities Education Act. It's a special education grant, and it's up slightly. The integrated preschool is up a few hundred dollars. And Title I, which is, we use its federal support to strengthen the core programs in schools and provide academic and/or support services to low achieving, and that is predicated on the free and reduced lunch count. And we use that to offset some remedial reading in our district, and that's gone down.
We've got a much higher percentage of free and reduced, though.
Yeah, but I think it's established on a few years ago, and so, you know, you can correct me if I'm wrong, Martin, but I believe that the...
Let's catch up.
Yeah.
Okay.
And then Title II is, is actually down slightly. We use that, it's the improving quality in training, and we use it for our mentoring program, almost exclusively, although we, we do have a comprehensive membership for ASCD and I think NCTM.
You're admitting I don't have my reading glasses?
Yep.
Because half of them I'm missing. Did you mean to say Title II, or did you mean Title III?
I was talking about Title II. Did I say Title III?
No.
No, you said Title II went down.
Title II went down from 34 to 75.
Oh, I'm reading it backwards.
379.
Sorry.
Yeah. And then Title III is English language acquisition, language enhancement, and academic achievement, and that has gone up slightly.
Not by much?
Nope. And then Title IV, I think I explained last year that that was just, just came back to us. That is student support and academic enrichment, and it's mostly targeting safe, healthy, and supportive learning environments. So that's increased quite a bit. And so that just gives you an idea of the grants as we head into our budget cycle.
So is this, recognizing the overall context of our budget, this is not large potatoes, but is $15,000 a pretty good increase?
Um, you know, any increase is welcome. The decrease is not so much, but some of those increases, if it's a small grant of, like the integrated preschool, having, you know, 400 more dollars really doesn't allow you to do anything significantly different with those funds. Title I going down hurts a little bit, as you try to factor in, you know, a salary for that remedial reading teacher. And then likewise, you know, a thousand dollars in Title III doesn't significantly change what you're going to do in support of our children who are English language learners. But in the, in the scheme of things, 600 plus 1,000 is, is significant and important to us, should look at the whole. Enrollment has actually gone down by 10 students. That sort of varies, you know, from, from month to month, as you know. Increasingly, I look at that second grade number as an aberration. It's kind of, kind of interesting. You know, I can remember when that was our kindergarten number a couple of years ago, and quite frankly, hoping that that would be a trend to give us some relief, but it hasn't been the trend, and we're back up to 120 and 110-plus. You can see that the high school numbers are the numbers that are pushing the limits the most. 534, that's, that's pretty significant, tight sneakers up at the high school. We are working, Pauline, on the space utilization request, and we'll try to present that when Diane comes to talk about her budget thing. Okay? So that's enrollment. The only other thing I'd like to bring to your attention, I've already mentioned it, but I'd like to say publicly, I hope after this meeting that you'll swing through the library and just take a look at it. I would say that it's probably 95% complete. There are a few items of furniture that have yet to be delivered, and Mike Gervin's program is working on some book carts, and they should be done pretty soon. I'd like to give credit to Lori and Becky, who have worked hard with a lot of help to set it up, and certainly I have to give huge credit to Diane O'Neil, who made it happen when some of us weren't sure that it would happen because of the bids that came in that were crazy. And we've gotten it done from what we had available, and I think it looks terrific. And then I'd also like to thank Egan and NHA, the Historical Association, because they are providing some things so that we have sort of a Nantucket history wall in there. That's not up yet, but we have a ship coming, and we'll have some pictures of Nantucket whaling ships and Nantucket captains, sea captains, who are, you know, the names of some of our kids. And I think that that is a pretty neat thing. Also, looking for some things from maybe a print of Frederick Douglass, when, you know, who visited here, maybe a Quaker, because that's been a part of our history, so we're trying not, and then, and then I think we said the shipwreck.
Some lifesavers.
Lifesavers. So trying to, you know, encourage our students to embrace their history. And I think if you go in, you'll see that it's a lot more comfortable space for the kids.
It looks college-worthy outside.
Yeah.
Very nicely done.
So that's all, my report.
Okay. Subcommittees, work groups?
Policies is gonna meet next week, I think is the plan.
Now, has the Policy Committee considered the question that came up two meetings ago?
That's what we're gonna work on. Are you talking crowdfunding?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I actually met with Tracy, who had asked a question, a clarification. We had a good meeting, and I think it's clarified, but I, I want to meet with the two Policy Committee members to share out with them, and we'll be bringing it not for November 6, but the 2nd November meeting. And then I think that was one thing, when we get to the horizon, you're gonna wanna decide whether it's the 13th or 20th of November.
Can I also make a mention through the chair?
Sure.
I was excited to read Dr. Bucky's morning message on Monday, that there is a collaboration with Mr. Windelken and some band members, and the Nantucket Community Music Center, am I correct, for Veterans Day?
Yes.
That's great. That's very exciting.
They're not marching, but they're going to be there playing.
Right, but hopefully it'll, it'll please the community.
And so that's great.
Please the community.
Kudos.
Right, thank you very much for that.
Okay.
Yeah.
Those angry men in the tan hats are all my patients, so I have to hear this.
We're making progress. We're making progress.
We can't have somebody just march around?
Put him on a flatbed.
Dr. Libery, it's not on the agenda, but we did have a couple of pieces of paper here about the superintendent search. If I could ask a couple of questions about that, I think they're easy ones.
First of all, I'm glad to see this is already making the kind of progress that it is. R is a masked person, since we've now retained them, going to be the facilitator for these focus groups?
I have been looking at a facilitator, and...
Other than from mask?
Yeah.
Okay.
And I haven't gotten an answer back, because I got...
Tied up.
And then we talked about the possibility of one or two, no more than two, of us attending some of these, just to listen. Are we welcome at all of these? We're gonna have to be organized to do it.
Organized to go to which thing?
I, I don't know yet. As you said, I'm retired. I'm available for all of them, but I don't wanna hog the platform if other people wanna be attending too, and we need to be careful.
So we would have to communicate through Tim?
Yeah.
If there were groups that we wanted to attend, and then Tim would be able to decide on, if one of us isn't facilitating it, then two, two members can go to each focus group.
So is that the, is that the rule? I know we can't be a member of the search, but we can't even sit in on a focus group? Is that true?
Can't or can?
Can't.
No, I think we can.
Well, the question is, what is participate?
We're limited again.
And participate as a group, I suspect.
Well, certainly three of us cannot go to the same one.
Is that because of the consideration?
Yeah. Logan has a question.
No, comment.
Two of you only at any one particular session. More than two constitutes a meeting.
Right. And shouldn't the first focus group be pre-K to five?
It constitutes a meeting, and someone can call.
It is, it is possible. We'd be at the same service.
Yeah, you're gonna have to, you're gonna have to join a new, different religion.
Shouldn't the first focus group be pre-K to five?
I don't think it matters which one is first. I think...
Well, as long as those people, I don't care about the order of it.
Saying it should be included.
It should be represented.
Yeah, it should be pre-K, not saying...
It says K to five.
Oh, yeah, sure, sure.
Just so that those folks know they're welcome, too.
Oh, okay. Oh, all right, yeah.
What is?
They're signing up for focus groups.
Okay.
I'm gonna have to get back.
Can I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Certainly, so moved.
Second.
Signing up for some of these, is that what this is?
Saying what efforts would be, so he's got efforts.